Our point is going to be on the screen, so like in the computer, just click page up or any keys here.
Just enter whatever.
Okay. Regular as in the computer.
How about going backwards?
Just page down.
Page down, okay.
Page up is backwards.
Backwards, okay. So just enter page up. Button on their microphone. We'd like to call this meeting in the Goodyear Planning Commission to order. If everybody could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you all for coming. We have a roll call, please. Here.
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 Okay, thank you. We have a quorum.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Short had sent an email. I don't know if you got copied on it, requesting to be absent.
Yes, I saw that.
Thank you.
Do I need to make a motion to excuse her, or is it?
Oh, that, if you feel you would like to, that'd be fine.
I just wasn't sure if that was protocol. I had been asked to do it before, so I wasn't sure if we needed to do it.
I mean, you certainly can't do that.
That was just special for you. We don't need to. All right, we're fine. Moving on, item number four, minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the minutes of October 15th, 2014.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Motion from Commissioner Miller, second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, public comments. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak that's here tonight for a non-agend item? Seeing none? Item number six, disclosure of ex parte communications. Anyone? Seeing none? Item number seven, all business. There is none. Item number eight, new business. Item 8.1, case number 14-200-00004, rezone of 40 acres from AU Agricultural Urban District to Planned Area Development District with modified residential development standards for Arroyo Ranch. The applicant is here for that one, right? Correct?
Mr. Chairman, Martin Martel, a new member of our staff, will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. My name is Martin Martel. I'm a planner here at the City of Goodyear. Tonight's case is going to be the Arroyo Ranch rezone, case number 14200004. Arroyo Ranch is planned to be a single-family development. The 40-acre parcel is located east of the southeast corner of Elliott and Rainbow Valley Roads, just west of Estrella Mountain Ranch. The project, when completed, will consist of 40 custom estate-style homes with a gated entry, which will be sold to individual buyers, who will be responsible for the design and construction of the homes that are going to be constructed on the 40 lots. These future buyers, however, will conform to strict design standards established by the PAD and the CCNRs, which will be administered by the future HOA of the development. This rezoning request for the property will change the current zoning from agricultural urban to planned area development. The purpose of the agricultural urban development is to allow low-density housing with horse privileges. Now, the developer is interested in keeping the low-density residential, but would like to remove the horse privileges for the properties. And the general plan also identifies this area as scenic neighborhoods, which encourages development of one-acre lots and encourages the preservation of the natural features and landscape found in the area. It also encourages large lots clustered around natural features, such as the washes that are going to be protected in this development, which is very close to what the intentions of this development is going to be. Now, the developer is requesting this rezone because the sizes of the lots are going to be smaller than what are allowed in agricultural urban, which is now currently 43,560 square feet. The developer is interested in developing plots that are going to be between 20 and 25,000 square feet. Now, here's a conceptual site plan for Arroyo Ranch. One of the unique aspects of this development is there's going to be a 30-foot desert buffer around the entire development, instead of fences or walls. There's also going to be an emphasis on the protection of the existing washes that are found on the property as well. The main focus of the project will be placing, will be placed on maintaining a strong compatibility with the surrounding desert and the nearby residential developments. Now, here is a conceptual landscape plan of the property. The entire property is going to be emphasized plantings of zero-scape, low-water vegetation. That will be similar to the vegetation that is found in the surrounding Sonoran Desert. All the landscaping in the common areas, tracts, the residential lots shall conform to the guidelines provided within the PAD and the CCNRs of the project. Now, here's an artistic rendering of the conceptual site plan. Another unique aspect of this development is there are going to be development envelopes on each lot. Each, all the developments inside the development envelope, such as structures, buildings, guest houses, will be contained within those development envelopes, keeping the surrounding area in its natural desert state. Now, these development envelopes are going to be defined, the area also contained within yard setback lines, plus any area inside the yard setbacks designated natural open space will take up generally 80% of the lot. Now, the development envelopes on each of these lots shall be defined and restricted, and shall be included in the CCNRs for the project. Now, the water and wastewater for this project will be provided by the City of Goodyear. It's going to be coming from Estrella Mountain Ranch through agreements with Newland communities in Estrella. Now, for the timeline, on the 8th of October, we had a citizen review meeting. During that meeting, four residents met from us, from the neighboring properties of Estrella Mountain Ranch. And they also met with the developer, the developer's engineer, and myself. Now, the residents had several questions for the developer concerning the project that pertain to timelines of the project, fencing, height limits of the homes, color palettes of the homes, and if the project will have an HOA. Now, prior to today's meeting, we sent out notices to 500 feet around the subject property to all the property owners there. We've also received a few phone calls, about four or five phone calls concerning this development. All the callers were in opposite, were actually, were in favor of the development, I'm sorry. They're in favor of the development. They actually liked the idea that it's going to be very similar to the neighborhood that they live in, which was Estrella Parcel 58. Now, staff recommends that the Arroyo Ranch PAD should be approved based on its compatibility with the desert landscape. Also, it will not affect the surrounding area, and also staff supports the approval with the recommended stipulations that are found in the staff report. Now, this concludes my presentation. I am open for questions from neighbors, developers, and the commission, and also the developers here as well.
Is there any questions of staff at this point?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, let me see, on page 12 of their report, the company's report, it talks about a secondary emergency access.
Yes.
Okay, it says your negotiations with Estrella. How are those negotiations coming, and is there a backup plan should they fail?
I'm actually going to introduce Bruce Tully, the chief developer, with that question.
Bruce, if we could please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dr. Bruce Tully, and I am 11832 East Clinton Street, Scottsdale, Arizona. And I'm here as the CEO of the Trapezium Consulting Group, which is both the planning and engineering consultants on the Arroyo Ranch project. And in answer to your very good question, the Newland group is in support of our emergency access plan. And the backup plan to the emergency access plan would be working with the State Land Department. So, but Newland, we've had several meetings with Newland, and they're in support of what we are proposed, which is a limited access gated emergency use only, highly landscaped and beautifully paved with desert-compatible pavers access, which is over the utility easement right-of-way as well. So, there's an existing utility easement right-of-way, and we're using that easement right-of-way to establish the emergency access right-of-way. And again, Newland has supported it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on one second. Anybody else from the commission?
I have another question for staff. I think, I think this one's for staff. On page 13 of this report, it talks about a pump station. We call it a pump station back east. I think you called a lift station out here. I guess my question is, is this the only community that's going to be using that? Is this going to be built larger for future development, and who's going to pay for it?
For that, I'd probably address that to Joe.
Martin, if you could put the first slide back up. Yes. This property is, was intended to go flow to the north, and so eventually it would go to Elliott Road, and then Elliott Road to Rainbow Valley Road to a future treatment facility further south. Obviously, it's not there right now, so in the interim, the sewer system's been designed to flow to, to the north, where it would go into a lift station that would be installed by the developer. And then it goes from there in a force main down to the southeast corner, more or less, of the site, where it enters into an existing sewer line and another lift station. But the short answer to your question is, it would be installed by the developer and then accepted and maintained by the city.
Anybody else from the commission at this point? I have one more question from, maybe you could answer it, but the applicant. As far as timing is concerned, once you have your city approvals, time for construction?
It's our client's intention to move as quickly as possible with the implementation of, of the project. Of course, market will always dictate everything, as will the structure of our economy right now, but their intention is to go forward quickly.
Your client's going to improve the lots themselves, or?
That's my understanding.
All right, by the way, I thought your, the name of your company is fantastic, Trapezium.
Well, thank you.
Very unique name.
There's a story behind that. Someday I'll, I'll share it with you.
Yeah, they probably wouldn't like it if you told it right now. All right, thank you. Anything else of staff? Anybody from?
Quick question.
Commissioner Bray.
Uh, just out of curiosity, I know it goes down to basically a two-lane road there right outside of Estrella. Is there any plans to widen that road at all? Or do any improvements on it?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Bray, to the best of my knowledge, there's no immediate plans for widening. When this project is developed, it would be, there would be widening to provide center-turn lane for accessing into the subdivision, and so, so that you aren't stopped on a, on a single lane blocking traffic while you're trying to make the left turn. So, there would be improvements off-site, so to speak, related to the subdivision entrance on Elliott.
Anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record.
John Briles.
And then you need to, when you're done, fill out a comment card for the staff, please.
I'm one of the adjacent existing lots there in Estrella, and I just had a, yeah, not quite on there. Yeah, it's, yeah. On the southeast side there. Just a couple of quick questions on the, on the zoning piece. So, if, if the, if it gets approved and it's approved to have the size of the lots smaller than what they are now, and we move forward, and maybe the housing market doesn't, doesn't do well, and none of these lots get sold, is it feasible then that this owner would be able to sell, and then another, like tract homes or whatever be put in there?
Staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but if that were to happen, they'd have to come back to the public process again.
Come back to, okay, fair enough. Second question, this is the last question. One of the other folks that were at that last meeting that we were at had a question, just wanted to know an update on, maybe you can share whether or not, the question was brought up, that, that the homes along the perimeter of the new Arroyo, possibly they could be maybe single-level to not really obstruct views. I don't know if you brought that back and have any?
We've agreed to that stipulation.
Okay.
So, that will be.
That's.
We appreciate the comments.
All right, thank you.
Perfect. Make sure you fill out one of those cards, please. Thank you. Anybody else from the public? With that, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Before I call for a vote, I'd just like to say I'm familiar with acre lots, and your proposed sized lots are, first of all, it's refreshing to see some larger lot stuff. I'm not opposed to density. Most on this commission aren't, but it's nice to start seeing some larger lot stuff come back into the mix. And half-acre lots, speaking personally of the acre lots, you know, are a lot to, a lot to keep up, and for custom homes, half-acre lots are about the perfect size, so we wish you luck. With that, I'll call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 14200004.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Bray. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, guys. Good luck. You too. Is the other applicants that are on the agenda here yet, Joe? Okay. The next one, item, or agenda item 8.2, case number 14-500-00002, preliminary plat for Cotton Lane Commerce Park. Joe? And I'll open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this one didn't require a public hearing, so we were okay.
Can't hear you.
This one didn't require a public hearing, so it's just an agenda item, so you're okay.
The one time I remember to do it, I did it and didn't have to.
You did it perfectly the first time.
I can close them, I just can't open them.
Okay, this, as you just read, is a preliminary plat for the Cotton Lane Commerce Park, which is 156 acres that is proposed to be subdivided into five industrial lots located on the west side of Cotton Lane, north of MC85 and south of Elwood Street. The property is part of the El Cidro PAD. You may recall that from a couple of months ago, when the residential portion of the PAD came before you. This vacant land is located on the other side of what is basically a reservation for a potential alignment of the 303. Exact alignment has not yet been selected through the environmental process, so we can't say that it's there with certainty, but it's been reserved for that purpose. Basically, the property is zoned PAD industrial under the El Cidro PAD, which allows for I-2 general industrial uses on the, all the property within the red area that's denoted on the aerial photograph. Another portion of the El Cidro PAD industrial is located on the south side of the railroad tracks in MC85. This property to the west is actually located in the county. And then we have the El Cidro PAD that goes all the way across and continues north on the north side of Elwood Street. And then is the, another commerce park where Amazon and Macy's is located to the east. The southeast is a property that was master planned for the Laken development, which has not proceeded forward at this point. And then the balance of this property to the south is located in the county as well, and is undeveloped. The preliminary plat is based on a preliminary site plan, which was included in your agenda material, where basically there would be one large lot north of a new roadway called, an extension of Commerce Drive to the west to a cul-de-sac, just short of where the potential alignment of the 303 is. And then two building locations out in front of what was the affectionately referred to as the old Rubbermaid Building, which is now occupied by SAS Manufacturing. And then there's a fifth parcel that is located in back behind the Rubbermaid Building that would also be accessed from Commerce Drive and potentially have access to Broadway Road to the west. This road off of Cotton Lane called Center Road is extended to the west to provide a new entrance to the Rubbermaid Building, which will result in the abandonment of the Broadway Road alignment, which currently exists in the vicinity of this area, and it provides the current access to the existing building. There also is a right-of-way reservation, which was never fully obtained from the county, or by, by the county. They made a declaration but never acquired the right-of-way, which would be reduced to 75 feet to match the 75-foot-wide dedication on the east side of Cotton Lane. So, there's a couple of abandonments involved in this. As, as you could see with the El Cidro plan, in the anticipation of the freeway coming through here, the existing Broadway Road and 175th Avenue would not be extended through the property. Instead, the connection from Cotton Lane to Citrus Road on the west side would be by this El Cidro Drive, which is, runs through the center of the project. The preliminary plat, basically this shows you the lotting of the five lots. And then you have it also in a little more detail. The landscaping plan shows what's intended to be landscaped along Cotton Lane and along the two entrances to the site, to make it an attractive and inviting entrance to the industrial park. I think with that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions the commission may have. Mr. Bernie Deutsch is here representing the property, if you have questions of the development.
Does anyone have questions? You mentioned the 303, just a side note, is there, you had any updates from A.D.O.
The focus, Mr. Chairman, the focus to date on the 303 alignment has been from I-10 south to Lower Buckeye Road. And the decision of where it goes from there is still contingent upon where the river crossing would go, and also where the extension of State Route 30 to the east and to the west it would go. So, that, we haven't had any update as to when that's going to occur, so the focus has been on the segment down to Lower Buckeye for now.
Timing as far as that for, to Lower Buckeye?
Uh, there, there is timing on the extension from I-10 to Van Buren, but, which is like 2016. But as far as the extension from Van Buren. But as far as the extension from Van Buren to Lower Buckeye, I'm not sure. I think they had it in the program a few more years out from there. That's about the best I can tell you right now.
Okay. The applicant wish to speak? No? No questions of the applicant? And nobody else here from the public? With that, I don't need to close the public hearing. Any other comments? Do you want to vote on this, right?
If you'd be kind enough to do that, that would be great.
See, he's finally getting my sense of humor after all these years. No further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I move to approve case number 14-500-0002.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Bray, second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Agenda item 8.3, case number 14-500-0005. It's a preliminary plat for Cantamia Phase 2 and 3, consisting of 1,073 single-family residential lots and 168 tracks on 326.79 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. This request for the preliminary plat for Cantamia Phase 2 and 3. The map and the screen, you can see it, is to show you the overall context of the area. Cantamia is right there in the middle. And that's the the PECOS alignment here, the Straya Parkway coming on the east side of the property. And Willis Road is coming on the west side. Just like show you the surrounding land uses. The Cantamia is this triangle over here, used to be called Village 10 in the previous PAD. And you have the, to the west, the water treatment facility over here. There's Willis Road, and again, Straya Parkway coming all the way to the south. And all these areas residential, we have different type of land uses to the northeast and north. Here's an aerial photo of the whole property. The Cantamia right now includes three phases. Phase 1 right now is under construction, you can see right there. And Phase 1 and 2, as part of this proposal that is before you tonight, will include these areas to the west of Phase 1. Being Willis Road here and Straya Parkway. The facility, the Rainbow Valley Water Reclamation Facility is to the west. And that's not includes a couple parcels to the where classified land use for commercial on this corner here and some kind of employment on the approved PAD on this corner here. So the proposal is to amend faces of 2 and 3, Cantamia. It was an existing preliminary plat approval, and this proposal is trying to amend the existing preliminary plat. The total number of homes proposed is 1,073 single-family residential lots and 168 tracks on 326-plus acres. This show you the lotting, the proposed on Phase 2 is over here, and then Phase 3 on the north side. There, the darker color on the map is showing the smaller lots. And the little lighter color is the bigger sized lots and the little darker. This next slide show you the areas by blocks, divided by blocks. Phase 3 is over here, and this is Phase 2. And this is Phase 1, the existing right now under construction. This show you, this table show you the distribution of the lots. On Phase 2, the existing, the approved number of lots, 45 by 110, used to be 120 lots. Eighteen percent of the total. Now, the new proposal with this request, it will increase number of lots to 132 or 21%. But the proposal eliminates the smaller lots, the 60 by 86. Now they don't have any of those sized lots. And the reason, according to the applicant, is that according to the market conditions, there's no demand for small lots in this area, so they decided to eliminate those lots and increase the number of lots for 60 by 117. Used to be 155, and now will be in the proposal is 312. Now it becomes 50% of the total on Phase 2 will be this size, 60 by 117. This 70 by 117 is almost the same, 27%, it goes up to 29%. So this distribution of lot sizes is on Phase 2. The similar table for Phase 3 also eliminates the 60 one. It's supposed to be 86, now 186, that's an error. Eliminates these lots also on Phase 3 and increases the, again, the lot sizes on 60 by 117. From 137 to 49. So based on those changes on the lot sizes, the also, the proposal also includes the building setbacks for the new, the envelope of the homes. So we have a, we'll be ranging on Phase 2 between 49, 4900 square feet on Phase 2 and 4950 on Phase 3, and average to 4950 on the minimum lot size. The maximum lot size will vary between 15,000 to 16,000 on Phase 3. And the average is about 16,000 square feet. And the proposed building setbacks will be 20 feet on both faces, and also the side yards will also be minimum 5 feet. And the rear yards will be 15 feet. The open space that would be provided will be 19% on the, on Phase 2 and 23.9 on Phase 3. The average will be 21%. And you can see that density is still a low density overall. 3.3 units per acre on Phase 2 and 3.2 units per acre on Phase 3, and the average is 3.3. The conceptual landscape plan is shown here, show the, some of the lakes, the proposed lakes, and the open space running on Phase 2 on this area, and also on Phase 3 on the north side here. Now Phase 1 is already existing, we are under construction. So the, based on the, on the request, so this proposal, the preliminary plat, replaces the previously approved preliminary plat for Phase 2 and 3 of Cantamia. And it's consistent with the minor PAD amendment that it was approved back in, actually last month. This amendment allows the, the request before you tonight to allow for the exchanges on the, on the PAD and the number of lots. So modifies some lot sizes and some of the lakes and includes 66 fewer lots that are previous approval on the original PAD. So it's consistent with the land use, development standards, and with the residential density approved as part of the Straya Mountain Ranch Village 10 PAD. And also it's consistent with the requirements of the city subdivision regulations. So the recommendations from staff is for planning and zoning commission recommend to city council the approval of the preliminary plat for Cantamia Phase 2 and 3, so dividing 326.49 acres into 1,073 single-family lots and 168 tracks. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. Chairman, and I'm here to answer any questions. And also the applicant is here, just in case you have any questions about the plat.
Any questions to staff?
Mr. Chairman and Mr. Tapia, can you walk us through some of these changes and what was the purpose of them?
Yeah, as part of the, I'm sorry.
I didn't get a chance to review it before the meeting started.
Yeah, during the last couple of days, we provide some of the conditions to the applicant and the city engineer, and they were recommending some of the changes. The changes on the conditions includes condition number 4, 15, 16, 17, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 31, and 34. And at the end, we added condition number 38 as part of the recommended approval.
What's the desired effect of these changes? Is it just part of the process and everybody's good with these stipulation changes? Or, like I said, this was sitting on the desk before I got here, so I didn't get a chance to really review it.
Yeah, there's a minor change. Some of the, for example, we go to the to condition number 4. It basically changing a couple of words on condition number 4. Just an A there, and at the end of the sentence is final plat. Binary modification. Then in condition number 15, the intent was just to match the existing on Phase 1, the mailboxes, that they're doing it right now on Phase 1. And the applicant requests he has to be consistent with the existing being built on Phase 1. And on 16, the applicant requests a little more time from 90 days to 120 days to provide the common open space areas. And it was 90 days, now it will be 120 days. The 17 is the same situation, yeah, from 60 days to 90 days. Condition number 25. Just a little more language about the concurrent with plating in adjacent parcels. Because that will be on Phase 2, when they're building Phase 2, then the developer will have to provide some of the with the plating of the lots, we have to provide some of the condition. The amenities on a half of the street with all amenities as part of Phase 2 of Cantamia. So include necessary tapers and transitions to existing payment sections. 26, the same situation, same as condition 25. And then 27, it's also based on the phasing, the phasing of the subdivision tracks. The condition at 27 was revised by the city engineer and the applicant was also agreeing with the condition, number 27, 28, and 29, and the applicant is agree with the conditions. The condition number 31 is only adding, deleting the 501 building permit. Instead, it will be prior to additions of the first building permit. That's the only addition to that one. And 34, it was just a minor change that the developer should provide detail that gated entrance green area in turn radius at the time that the gated entry is being proposed for construction. That was the addition to the condition. And the last one, condition 38, that was added because you saw on the map the location of the water treatment plant. There's an easement that if it is any residential land uses, we have to have a thousand feet separation. And the condition is to, before they start building the blocks 21 and 22, 21 and 22, which are the closest to the plant, treatment plant, they will have to create some kind of a
20 and 21.
Yeah, 20, 20 and 21.
Yeah.
Those are the one closest to the water treatment plant. That's why we added the condition 38. So that's just.
The developer has to make improvements to the sewer plant? Is that what, is that how it reads?
Mr. Chairman, no, not necessarily. It has to do with, at the point in time when the improvements are made. There's an odor control easement that is of record right now that extends 1,000 feet from the plant. And it cannot be removed until odor control measures are installed at the plant. And at least at this point, it's my understanding the city was planning to do that, but not immediately. So until that occurs, those parts, or those parcels within that area cannot be developed, cannot be platted.
The city's, someone's going to do something to mitigate the odor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we also talked to the sewer department, and they tell us that they working on it. And the intent is to create that, mitigate the odors. And right now, they're still regulated by the county too, so they have to provide that control. But right now, because it's nothing there, there's no emergency. That's why this condition will help to, if they're trying to plot these 20 and 21, those blocks, then the city and potentially the developer, we have to work it out and eliminate that easement and to control the others coming to the residential area.
I thought Goodyear Sewer Plants didn't stink.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I said I thought the city of Goodyear Sewer Plants didn't stink.
Well, I think that they are well managed and well maintained.
I had a light in the media a little bit, I'm sorry. Alright, I'm sorry.
The applicant is here also, if you have any questions.
Anybody have anything for staff?
I have a question. I'm just curious about this, based on my past experience when I was working back east. I see in all of these different cases we get, we have to notify people that they live within the airports, the zones, and the noise, and the this and the that. Does anybody ever require notification to people that are in with, are going to buy a house within a certain distance of a are going to buy a house within a certain distance of a wastewater treatment plant? Is that required to let them know that?
Yeah, we have a condition there that it says to same situation as the one for the noise, the flying, I mean, the airport noise, to notify the potential buyers about the plant closer to the area here.
That is a stipulation?
I think I put in there, Jones.
Yeah, there's a stipulation that even once the odor easement is removed or reduced from 1,000 feet to 350 on parcels 20 and 21, they still have a notification, a disclosure.
Very good, thank you.
It has to be disclosed by potential buyers, yes.
The applicant wish to speak? Is there any questions of the applicant?
Are you okay with stipulation 38? And all the rest that happened today?
All right, thank you. With that, can I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 14-500-0004.
Second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Peter, second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, sir. Item number nine, staff communications. Joe?
I was going to report to you that the cases that you saw last month went to the council Monday night. The advanced automotive use permit was approved. The Wincow PAD amendment use permit and comprehensive sign package was also approved as well as the Liberty Utilities PAD amendment for the water recharge basins. And then the meeting prior to that, your recommendation with regard to Sundias Farms PAD amendment was heard by the council on November 10th. And it was approved as well, so I thought I'd report on that. I also wanted to remind the commission members that the terms terms are expiring in January for a few of you. And we'll be advertising in the December InFocus magazine to let people know if they have interest to submit applications. And as you know, sitting members also are asked to submit applications as well, so make sure you meet the deadline for that. Yeah, I think I had one more thing, but I can't remember it now, so. Guess that's all I got. Oh, see, takes a second, clicks. I'm not sure we're going to have an item for the agenda next month, which I know will sorely disappoint you right before Christmas, but there's, there's an outside chance, at least at this point, that none of the items are ready to come forward. So we'll let you know how that progresses as we get closer to the date.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank everyone and congratulate you on the general plan getting passed and all the hard staff work that went in. And it was a job well done, and please extend that congratulations to Katie. I know she really put in a lot of work on this.
Yeah, she was instrumental in carrying the ball on that one and taking it all the way to its completion and ratification. Until it gets ratified, you never know if you've done the right thing or not. And so I think we proved that overwhelmingly. And as you noted, you got copies in your packets this time so that you'd have your own copy. So thank you for that, and I'll pass it along.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, meeting adjourned.